Gentlemen and echoey people. War cowbell. So this is the City of Redondo Beach Planning Commission, Thursday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Does mine do it too?
Six thirty-four P M. And I am calling this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please? Commissioner Light?
Present.
Commissioner Boswell?
Which one?
Boswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Craig? Commissioner Gaddis?
Present.
Commissioner Conroy?
Here.
Commissioner Hazel Time? Chairperson Lamb? All right. Commissioner Conroy, could you lead us in a salute to the flag?
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and for all, for all.
Thank you. All right. So does anyone move to approve the order of agenda?
Move to approve the order of agenda.
A second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Now we have, do we have blue folder items? We do not have any blue folder items. No blue folder items, okay. Yeah, is it that that's actually? Let's see. Can you shut it off? Does it have a button? It's off now. No, that wasn't it. Okay, wait.
I can turn the speaker off if what happened.
Yeah, okay, good. Yay. It was a fun effect, but.
Be a little distinct.
We were tired of it. So we have no blue folder items. And consent calendar. Consent calendar are business items, except those formally noticed for public hearing or those pulled for discussion are assigned to the consent calendar. The commission members may request that any consent calendar item be removed, discussed, and acted upon separately. Items removed from the consent calendar will be taken up under the excluded consent calendar section, and those items remaining on the consent calendar will be approved in one motion. I will call on anyone wishing to address the commission and any consent calendar item on the agenda, which has not been pulled by the commission for discussion. Each speaker will be permitted to speak only once, and comments will be limited to a total of three minutes. Commissioners, anyone want to pull consent calendar item? No? Anyone who wished to speak on a consent calendar item?
There are no E attendees.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar items?
Motion to approve the consent calendar items.
For the second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Their motion carries. Our next section is public participation on non-agenda items. This is to intend to intended to provide members of the public with the opportunity to comment on any subject that does not appear on the agenda for action. The section is limited to thirty minutes. Each speaker will be afforded three minutes to address the commission. Each speaker will be permitted to speak only once, and written requests, if any, will be considered first under the public participation item. Do we have any written comments?
We do not have any written comments.
Do we have anybody present who wants to speak on a non-agenda item? And do we have any people online who want to speak?
We have no E attendees.
Okay, well, that makes things short and quick. Moving right along. Our next section is ex parte communication. This is intended to allow all officials the ability to reveal any disclosure or ex parte communication about the following public hearings. We'll start with Commissioner Light.
Nothing to declare.
Commissioner Boswell?
Nope.
All right. Commissioner Conroy?
No ex parte communications to, to check.
And I, I spoke with, I spoke with Commissioner Craig on the, on the agenda item. All right. We're going to open a public hearing. This public hearing is for consideration of an exemption declaration and conditional use permit to allow the operation of an animal grooming business in approximately nine hundred and fifty square foot tenant space within an existing multi-tenant commercial building on a property located at thirteen hundred South Pacific Coast Highway number one oh five in a commercial zone. Do I have a motion to open this public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do.
Oh, I should swear in the.
Yes.
All right. Is anybody here to speak on the agenda item regarding the animal grooming business? Anyone? The applicant? Is the applicant here?
The applicant is present.
The applicants are here.
Well, yeah, I'd like to, we need to swear you in and anybody else who's going to speak on this particular item. If you could, oh, okay. All right. Please stand up. If you're going to speak on this item, I need you to, I need to swear you in. So if you could stand up.
They were only going to answer questions.
All right. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Acting Chair Gaddis and members of the planning commission. I'm going to turn it over now to our senior planner, Stephen Jiang, who present the item.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Stephen. I'm here to present the item before you in consideration of an exemption declaration and conditional use permit for an annual grooming at one thousand three hundred South Pacific Coast Highway. The subject property is located on the southeast corner of South Pacific Coast Highway and Avenue E. The site is, the site is Zone C two P D, which is pedestrian, commercial pedestrian, and the properties to the east are Zone R one, single-family residential. The properties to the west, north, and south are also Zone C two P D. The lot is twenty-two thousand two hundred and ten square feet. It currently contains a two-story commercial building with forty-one parking spaces, one driveway off of South P C H and another driveway off of Avenue E. The tenant space itself is nine hundred and fifty square feet. This is a photo of the elevations where the proposed tenant will be. And here's a closer view of the space with the courtyard and the windows that the tenants will have. The applicant is not proposing any interior improvements besides adding workstations and counters, so no structural changes. The proposed business is going to be open five days a week. They're going to be closed Mondays and Thursdays, open from nine A M. to five P M. There will be no walk-ins. It will be appointment only. Drop off and pickup is staggered by about ten minutes, and in terms of employees, there will only be three employees employed at this location. The intention is to have ten to fifteen dogs groom per day. I want to clarify that this business is intended for dogs only, and there will be no retail sales, incidental retail sales of pet supplies and things like that, and also no overnight boarding. In terms of parking, the site itself contains a total of forty-one spaces. When staff did an analysis of all the existing spaces, including the proposed use, the total required parking is thirty-eight. As such, there's a surplus of three spaces, so we don't anticipate parking to be an issue. Here is the picture of the two parking lots for this space. The left picture is going to be the lower lot where you can see the proposed use. And then on the roof of the building to the left is the second lot, which is the right picture. So these constitute the forty-one total spaces. On the right side, where the rooftop parking is, you'll see there's a staircase that goes down in the far corner. So if people park there, they can walk down to the courtyard below, or they can walk along the sidewalk on Avenue E to access through the front that way. In terms of noise, all business activity will be completely within the building. No proposed outdoor component. The doors will be required to remain closed during business hours and when dogs are at the shop. Sound control is required per attached noise study, so the tenants will be required to do sound attenuation control as a part of this proposal. That'll be inspected on by the Building and Safety Division during the permit plan check phase. You can, a condition of approval was added to clarify this. In terms of distance, the space, not only is it on the first floor and blocked by the building to the east, but it is about seventy feet away from the nearest residential residence, homes to the east. And again, there was a requirement to obtain an acoustical, acoustical, acoustical design analysis, which the applicant did do, and that's attachment five as a part of this report. In terms of outdoor waste or odor waste and disposal, the facility does not offer boarding, so the amount of waste from clients will be minimal. Pet owners will be advised to pick, pick up after their pets and relieve their pets before appointments. No animals are allowed out of the grooming area until they are picked up by their owners. Additionally, applicants will use adequate containers to hold waste between trash collections, and waste will be placed in tightly sealed disposable bags and containers to limit the odor. The resolution also includes a condition that the applicant will be responsible for monitoring and disposable waste in the immediate vicinity outside of the tenant space. In terms of the conditional use permit findings, staff finds that the property is adequate in size and shape, that the existing driveways along South Pacific Coast Highway and Avenue E are sufficient for the use and all uses on site. Additional conditions were added, clarifying the set hours of operation, the number of employees, clarifying that appointments, that the shop is only going to be appointment only, that there's going to be a staggering of about ten minutes between drop off and pickup for each customer, and that the use will be exclusively used within the interior of the tenant space. Additional conditions include requiring entry doors to be closed during animal grooming, that the adequate, or that the applicant will use adequate containers to hold animal waste, and that they will continually monitor the immediate vicinity and the shop for waste control, and that an acoustical analysis was performed, and that the applicant will be required to adhere to the findings of that report. Soundproofing is also going to be required per the recommendations of the acoustical analysis. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission open the public hearing, take testimony, close the public hearing, and make a determination regarding the exemption declaration and the conditional use permit for the animal grooming business at thirteen hundred South Pacific Coast Highway. That concludes staff presentations, and we're available for any questions.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I'll start things off with a question. That's a very good picture right there, so you can hold if you can hold it on that one. First question I have is the HVAC system here. You know, some, some of these buildings have forced air HVAC that go between units of the building. This has a bakery, but it's across sort of an open area. I'm not even sure if it's exactly the same building, you know, except they're maybe two connected buildings or such. But does this grooming place share an HVAC with other tenants?
That's a good question. That's going to be more of a question for, are the owner of the building is present?
All right, please, please approach and if you could state your name and also your microphone's off.
Oh, we're good? Okay. Oh, is it? Oh, yeah, there it is.
Yeah, there we go. So.
T J Parker. Good evening. Okay, so the, that's two wings of the building.
Right.
They're connected in only one way, and that is with the staircase that Stephen was addressing. It's in the elbow of that center. So no one shares any existing HVAC units. They're all heat pumps, and they're all split units for different reasons.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Well, here's one good reason.
Yeah, so it has a three ton in there, and it's nine hundred and fifty square feet, so it's more than adequate.
Okay. Okay, that sounds good.
Is there anything else?
Do you, yeah, does anybody else have any?
They're the only ones on that HVAC unit, right?
Uh huh, that's correct, yeah. Yeah.
Did you have a question, Commissioner Conroy?
Yeah, I was curious. Have you already notified the neighboring tenants about?
I did.
And did you get any feedback?
Yeah, everyone was happy it was getting leased. See, it's been vacant since the lockdown. I think that's.
So they're excited to have somebody. They're excited to have somebody.
One business feeds the other business, so it's, it's that kind of camaraderie, you know?
And no concerns at all about noise or odor or anything?
No, not really, because the center in itself is kind of has a lot of dogs because of the bakery. People are always walking their dogs, bringing them, and they either, they don't always bark, but if they do, it's something we can contend with, you know? It's not a huge issue.
So right now, there's next door, it looks like a vacant site there?
Well, next door is a dry cleaners.
Oh, the other side?
On the other side is the part of the bakery, actually.
Oh, that is actually occupied by the bakery.
Directly across. So we're looking at a problem, yeah, very good. That was a good picture right there.
Okay.
So from the vacant unit, which you can see with the blinds closer to the mailboxes, that's about, I don't know, I want to say twenty-five feet or so. You know, so it's pretty long distance, and then between the stairs, it's fifteen feet, so, you know, there's not going to be.
There are no common walls with the bakery whatsoever.
Common walls, right. That's exactly right. Yeah.
What were the results of the sound study and what were the recommendations?
I was there when they did it. Yeah, so the recommendations were, we have one adjoining wall with the dry cleaners only, and you can see it in the picture there, where the dry cleaners is, that wall goes all the way back to the property line, which is the block wall. And that wall has currently has the Jimson board on it, you know, from probably a long time ago with the sound, not soundproofing, but the insulation that was there originally. So when they looked at it, they gave me option one and option two that was in the report. I took option two because that center is nineteen seventy-seven. You start pulling walls off of there and things, things get tricky. Oh, yeah. Anyone knows construction knows. You don't know what's behind those walls. We don't want to know. So with that being said, the easiest way that will get us to the S T C that we need, which is, I think, fifty-five, this, is it fifty-five to sixty-five or something? Fifty-five? We make the number, though, for what's regulated for what you're looking for.
So they have a recommended amount, and then you're going to make that number how?
They determine that number by basically brought in a big machine that makes kind of a white noise.
No, I'm familiar with that.
Yeah, neither was I.
My, no, I am familiar. Pardon me. I am familiar with that. My question to you is, what steps are you taking to achieve the recommended sound deadening that the report requires?
So the.
That's where I was getting to.
Okay.
Yeah. So what we're going to do is, over the existing drywall that's there, we're going to add an extension of two-by-fours to support another layer of that with heavy wool insulation, like a, you know, I forget what they call it. There's a material they use. It's real heavy duty, and that alone will, will bring it down to the right S T C.
Okay. Will there be a follow-up test then to, to verify that?
Not from the company, because they already know it's going to work by their testing. So what they do is say, well, I'm just telling you the way it's presented to me. So I'll, I'll just, I'll interject. Report, you know, so what they do is they already have the determination of what's there existing. It's all computer-related, according to what they tell me, and then they make the assessment of what's going to bring it down. We weren't that far off from the number, so it wasn't like a real exaggerated amount that we needed to do. So I spoke with T J prior to the meeting, and a part of the, on the board now or on the PowerPoint, this is the noise study that was provided. There's two options in the report. The applicant indicated that they're interested in option two. So these are the, these are the methodologies that the applicant will have to do to meet the S T C, the sound transmission. Yeah, class for that wall.
Isn't this a blue folder item? We're included in our.
It was included. It's attachment five in the staff report. So it's, it's, it's attachment five in the staff report. So it was included in the packet that came out over the weekend.
Okay.
But this is, the applicant indicated option two, and the Building and Safety Division will inspect to make sure that it meets it per this requirement as a part of their check, and they'll also review it for the S T C, the sound transmission class requirement, too.
Okay, so the purpose of this sound deadening is to keep noise from escaping the, the space. Is that correct?
Essentially, yeah, to keep it under the, I think, fifty-five decibels that's required by the code.
Right. So wouldn't it be reasonable to test once the, the sound ending material is in place to see if it's doing what it's supposed to?
I think the way that Building and Safety handles it is that these are best management practices industry-wide, and the baseline set by these methods is sufficient for building to meet what's considered the S T C requirements. I don't, they don't perform, building does not perform a noise measurement after. However, if there are any complaints with noise, then we, building would then get involved and see if there's more mitigation that's required per the D B A that's set by the, the study, that fifty-five D B A. So say, for example, the business comes in and there's excessive barking, and we get complaints from the surrounding businesses. There will be a new measurement done to see what the D B A is at, and if the D B A is still under the required amount for the commercial zone, then we might have to look into other methodologies, see if we can lower it further, but there's not very much. If the D B A meets the requirement, there's not much we can do about that. However, if the D B A is still excessive, then the Building and Safety Division could require additional mitigation of noise to meet.
Yeah, if it's under the decibel limit that's allowed, then I don't see where there's really that much that can be, you know, that would be, that we would need to do. It just seems to me like if you're going to require sound mitigation, that you should actually make sure that it's. that you should actually make sure that it's doing the job that you're asking it to. But what you're saying is the professional, the engine, sound engineers say, if you do this, you'll be good. So we're, so we're going along with that saying, okay, if we do this, we'll be good, right?
Yeah.
Got it.
People have trouble hearing Pacific Coast Highway if it's too loud.
You can't hear the cars well, huh?
Yeah, right. Commissioner Boswell.
So if I understand this correctly, this is just gonna be on the one wall that they share with the dry cleaner.
That's correct.
So this is, all of this is because we don't want somebody operating dry cleaning machinery to be disturbed by dogs?
Yeah, that's your.
It's basically one or two people making a lot of noise with dry cleaning equipment?
Because Raylex is right there on the other side of the wall. You can hear it very well. That'll kind of baffle some of that.
What's Raylex?
Raylex for the dry cleaners. It's a machinery that they use to get the clothes to go around.
Okay.
It's on that same wall. And right now you're gonna hear it pretty good.
So when you turn it on, you can hear it?
So it's, it's also so that the, the people at the pet grooming business don't have to listen to the dry cleaning machinery?
Yeah, it'll be like a nice symphony of dog barking.
Are they sharing in the cost?
What's that?
Are they sharing in the cost, out of curiosity?
Is there what?
Are they sharing in the cost?
No.
No. Okay, so they just benefit. What about the other side of the, the room? It's all windows. Is there a concern about, about sound going out into the public space or in the, in the breezeway?
Because of the distance, like I was saying, there's about thirty feet to the coffee shop. And there's fifteen feet from the stairs, you know, from across that way to where she has her seating area. So I think it's.
So the, so not really concerned about the open space?
I don't wanna sound negative on it, but it's almost impossible to do because it is windows. And these are retail sized windows.
So no double pane, triple pane windows?
Oh my gosh, you know, the cost alone would be outrageous. You know, so I think we're getting into an area of reconstructing the building.
So.
For one unit.
It, it, it just sounds like on one side of the room, it's overkill. On the other side of the room, it's, hey, you know, we're not gonna spend the money.
Well, I mean, the point you're making is, is completely valid. It's the first things I thought when I started hearing that we needed to do this. Because there's also the fact that, you know, if they weren't there anymore and they weren't the tenant, we'd have a soundproofed wall for no reason. So there's that aspect, you know? But all we're trying to do at this point is meet the criteria of the general plan, because I saw it in the general plan, it's somewhat being discussed. Noise, what do they call it? Noise something?
Mitigation.
Not noise mitigation has another name, but it was on your general plan on the site. So it's obviously something that's coming, I think is prevalent is ADA issues, you know? It's gonna get like that, where people are gonna want things more quieter and quieter and have more requirements. So the requirements that we're doing for this space do exactly match what's needed.
I'd also like to, I'd also like to add that the city does have a noise ordinance that governs commercial spaces. I believe also commercial on the exterior is limited to fifty-five DBA as well. So if, for whatever reason, similar scenario as the interior, the basic, the business next door, if the noise levels from the dogs does reach a point to where we're getting complaints about it and we measure the DBA on site and it exceeds the noise ordinance required, we could require additional mitigation on the glass windows in the future to mitigate that noise. So those noise concerns.
So there is, there is some concern on the part of the city about noise bleed through into an open space, into outdoor space?
Correct, yeah. And that's usually addressed as a part of the noise ordinance.
Cause I know that when I work in my home office on the complete other side of my home from my neighbor's backyard where their dog barks whenever they're not home, I can hear it like he's in the room with me. And that's going through several walls and windows. So that's why, that's why I ask about that. There seems to be a, a, a tremendously valiant effort for the dry cleaning side and and just ignoring the issue on the, on the glass window side. I don't know that that's a, I, I, I wouldn't expect that to be a deal killer. Certainly wouldn't be for me. But I am interested in understanding the process that goes through and making a decision and how that, how that is addressed by city regulations if they are. So I think I have the information I need.
Do you have a question?
That's a good point. I mean, you know.
Well, thank you for that.
This is, well, yeah, I've done dog grooming before in the past. This is actually new that they're requiring this. I, I've done many. And so I went, when we got to doing this.
So now you know why, now you know why they need it.
Did you have a question, Commissioner Conroy?
Yeah, just a follow-up. I, I'm hearing the, I'm hearing city staff say how they would handle it if they get noise complaints. I'm just, I wanna ask you, it's TJ?
Yeah.
I wanna ask you, TJ, what would your plan be if, if, before the city even heard about it, if you were hearing noise, noise or odor complaints from the other tenants or, or neighbors? How would you, what do you plan to handle that?
Sure, from my mix and my experience, I've done this, I've had other buildings and I've done it. It's tenant mix. You, you think ahead of time and you don't put a, a dog grooming in and then massage place next to it, you're gonna have a problem. You know, so you have to think ahead, ahead of the game and think, I've got eleven units, because this used to be eleven units. It, it, and now is taken up by the chiropractor. He's taken three of the units, you know? So people start moving along differently and you kind of have to make that assessment as you go along. But tenant mix is huge. Cause we have centers here in Redondo Beach that I get, I know some of the building owners, they call up and they go, oh, UPS is yelling because the picture house is out of control, you know? I'm like going, who was there first, you know? It's like, I can't help you, you know?
Interestingly, you do have a massage place there. It's not sharing a wall, but you do have a massage place there, right?
Exactly right. That's why I kind of felt comfortable with it because it was far enough away. And my experience with dogs in that area anyways, because that is really kind of a dog haven place right there with the avenue streets. People use the center to walk their dogs to get just a PCH. They'll walk right down those staircases. So we have dogs, we've had dogs through there for years.
Understood. To Commissioner Boswell's point though, if you could draw a line from those windows that are single pane, I think you said, straight through to the massage place. And I could imagine somebody like you said, getting a massage there relaxing and hearing barking, right? Because dogs coming in and out potentially, right?
Well, I think you're talking kind of a, a broad scope of frequencies. Because we have motorcycles that go down there too that are just outrageously loud. And you think it's the end of the world, you know? And it's just some guy in a little scooter that figured out his muffler to be louder.
But he's not there eight hours a day.
Yeah, it's pretty consistent. It's pretty consistent. But with that being said, I'll stay on point. The massage and the windows, these are retail windows, so they are a little bit thicker than your normal pane windows at a house. You know, in a residential. And I put new windows in too. And they're really nicely done, you know, tempered glass. It's not cheap. And these are, these windows, you know, are pretty, you know, pretty high, pretty big cuts of windows, five of them. So you'd have to do not only the windows, but the frames as well. Then the walls on top of that. But when the sound company came out, the, they're actually called sound, acoustical sound consultants. That's a new field, by the way, if you're curious to know what's going on in this industry. Typically, when you guys get these plans, they're incorporated in the architectural work. So it kind of gets buried in there. It's like, you did Wolfgang, I know, because you guys, I saw you on the minutes, you know? And Wolfgang had used a, a place called Salter. Okay? And you wouldn't really know it unless you looked at the plans and really saw the one sheet, one sheet says Salter, Acoustical Consultant. And the rest of it was all about the architecture, you know? And, but really, if you kind of set juxtapose the two, they're, they're two different things that they're doing. The architect is relying on the sound of Acoustical Consultant in order to get your okay. So it kind of gets, I, I wanna say for lack of a better word, it gets buried in the presentation. Whereas mine's real focused because it is that. That is the improvement we're doing. And with that being said, that's kind of alarming because you kind of go, oh, there's this new business. I was telling Stephen, there's only one thousand and ninety in the United States of America, not in California, in the United States of America. Look it up, you'll see it. I was flabbergasted when the sound was all that. I said, this is new, isn't it? And he goes, well, it's not new, but it's new for what we're doing. So their job is, their job scope is opening up because of the regulations.
So sound insulation is?
It's not the same.
Okay, what are you, specifically are you referring to that's new? I'm a little, little lost.
I know that it's new, but the way it's being used is new in the.
What is it? What are we talking about?
Acoustical consultant.
Okay.
So Commissioner Boswell, we're kind of, kind of drifting off the subject. You know, in Hermosa, the Bow Wow Boutique on Hermosa Avenue, they have, they have like a half door on it and they keep half of it open all day long while they're in business. Nobody complains, really. And this is wide open with all the dogs barking and stuff. It really doesn't carry that far in a business area. So anyway, you have a question?
We're not supposed to ask questions?
Commissioner Rotlight?
Yeah. Just say, what do you have now for curtains there in the glass? Cause there are sound abating.
That's correct. That's why I'm baffling with that.
Yeah, it looks like they're blinds, I guess.
Yeah, they're blinds. Yeah, that's correct.
But if it was a problem, you could replace that with some kind of thicker.
I mean, you could, but then there goes the natural sunlight. You know, and the, and they're leasing a building and paying money for some sort of ambiance.
I have a question about that. Is it a five-year lease? So the amount of money you have to put into that, the walls and all it?
Yeah, you understand. That's exactly right. It gets expensive. This is not cheap. Some of these acoustical sound engineers, I got a few quotes, some of them are really up there. And then what you do is you go from the sound acoustical consultant to what you're talking about, which is the actual sound, the sound installation companies. That's what they're called. So all they, they're like your general contractor. They come out and they go, oh yeah, let's put that in. But they can't put it in without the sound consultant telling what's gonna go in according to what is needed for the city. So you have to do it in that order. I'm kind of glad we actually did this tonight because I was thinking that the whole time I was going, this is actually gonna be a really awakening for us in a new industry that's going to be very prevalent in these meetings. Cause I, I've been discussing with Sean and Stephen, you know, CUPs in general are gonna go up. You're gonna get more and more of these like you've never seen because the uses are so limited.
Experts on the pet grooming and massage parlors.
Well, yeah, I mean, you can see the uses are very limited, you know? And then, and then all you have on the other end is cannabis. That goes from massage to cannabis and then back and forth and, you know, no, this is CBD, you know? It's like, it's the same thing. So.
Did you have another question, Commissioner Conroy?
More for the proprietors than the property owner. I just wanted to know, is this your first business of this type? Do you own other ones? What's your experience? Hello?
Hi.
Could you introduce yourself and just for the record?
Just give us your name.
Just, yeah.
My name's Masumi Huruichi. That's my first business. I'm a groomer, the owner, twenty-five years' experience.
I think she said twenty-five, right? Twenty-five or five? Twenty-five? Okay, twenty-five.
I think that's wonderful. We love new businesses coming to town. This is all a very good thing.
Thank you so much.
As a, as a group, we're asked to dig into these things and make sure that it's a right fit for the community. That's what we're doing here. So. Okay, so I understand you have five years' experience in this industry.
Twenty-five.
Thank you, sorry.
Twenty-five years' experience? And but this is the first time you'll be starting your own business, doing it? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any online questions or comments or anything like that?
Sit down or are you?
Hang tight, yeah. The answer will probably be no, but.
We're getting close to the end.
Okay. Do you have, did you have another question? Do you have a question? Do you have a question?
I'm afraid to ask it.
All right. And I'm, I'm, I have no further questions, so you, you may, thank you so much for. Okay, do you guys think, are you guys ready to close the public hearing? Oh, are there any, anybody present have any comments? Okay, so we're all done with public comment on this.
We can close the hearing and still ask questions of staff if we want, correct?
I believe so. Yeah, uh, okay.
So I'll, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, great. We're closed. So let me just comment that, you know, I, I take my, my dog to the, the Bow Wow in Hermosa. It sits in a very densely packed commercial area. They have restaurants, at least on one side of them, with the dining area right across the sidewalk, you know, the outdoor dining area. And it, you know, and they have as many, you know, twenty-five, thirty dogs in there. They're, you know, they're completely booked up every day with, with dogs. And it just, it doesn't seem to bother anybody. They leave the door open all day long there. And no, nobody is bothered by these dogs in a commercial area like that, you know? And it doesn't sit on commercial, on Pacific Coast Highway. So we're, we're not even talking anywhere close to the traffic then that you'll be experiencing down there. So I, I personally just don't see this as a problem.
I, I have a similar experience where I go to, it's a self-washing, you shampoo, you play. And you've got Bistro Miota right here.
Barrel, right.
And then you got, yeah, I'm barrel. And then you've got Redondo, which is a breakfast sandwich type place, right? Right buffeting both sides.
Restaurants on both sides.
And all three of those businesses have been there for quite some time. So it doesn't appear that, and, and on that, they take walk-ups at the you shampoo place. So there oftentimes dogs even waiting outside the door. I don't see where it's causing excess problem for their, their neighbor tenants. So I, and like I said, we've, we've reviewed a similar CUP on another, similar type business and ultimately approved it. I would be in favor of approving this one as well.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just that my experience, I got a dog too and I had to bring it to self-washing. We're there. It never barks. And he's a barker. I'm just wondering with.
It's scared of you, I think.
Yeah, well, that is true. That is true. But in general, it doesn't seem to me that dogs, when they're being groomed, are necessarily frightened or all. They usually are relatively calm. So I don't, it's not been my experience that they're real noisy. You don't have five dogs that are barking all at the same time typically. So I, with you on feeling this is appropriate for the, what they have here.
Do I have a motion to approve a resolution? Oh gee whiz, where is it? Hang on a second. Sorry, I have to go down to the resolution for a sec. Oh, there we go. There we go. Do I have a motion to approve a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Redondo Beach, California, approving an exemption declaration, approving the request for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of an animal grooming business with an existing multi-tenant commercial property located in a commercial zone at thirteen hundred South Pacific Coast Highway, case number twenty-two-five-zero-zero-one-zero.
So moved as presented by staff with no changes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
May I have a real call vote, please? Commissioner Light?
Aye.
Commissioner Boswell?
Aye.
Commissioner Craig? Commissioner Gaddis?
Aye.
Commissioner Conroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazel Time? Chairperson Lam? It is approved. Congratulations. Welcome to Redondo Beach. All right.
That rabies vaccine handy.
Okay. Let's see, what do we have here? We have items continued from previous agendas. Nothing.
We have none.
Items for discussion prior to action.
We have none.
Items from staff.
Just a couple of announcements, some upcoming projects. You're gonna, we have a, potentially a couple of CUPs coming on our next agenda. And we're working really hard with the South Bay Social District on phase two of the Galleria. And that'll, we're shooting for June or July on that. So I just wanted to give the commission a heads up. Those will be some, you know, heavier agendas when we're dealing with that. And then just wanted a special note as, as we've all now are. And then just wanted a special note as, as we've all, uh, now are aware, Chair, um, Lamb has resigned. And I just wanted to take a moment and thank her for the years of service she's, uh, done for the city. Worked diligently. She came into the planning office about ten years ago or so and was interested and wanted to get involved. And boy, she jumped in and she's been a dedicated servant to the city for a long time. So we're gonna miss her. That's it.
Okay, commission member items. I'd like to just add to that, that, uh, yeah, Commissioner Lamb is having, um, has a recurrence of some severe health problems and, uh, will be resigning. And, uh, do I understand correctly that, um, that Commissioner Craig will now, uh, serve as chairman for the remainder of her, uh, of her tenure? Which, actually, her tenure is only another half year, I believe, or something like that, right?
Yeah, I believe so. I believe it'll go till October.
Cause she and I were both up for, at, at the end of our-
Correct. So it'll be-
First terms.
Vice Chair Craig, uh, assuming the chair position. And then I think it'd be up to the, uh, commission to select a, a vice chair to, to fill his spot. So I don't think there'll be a replacement until we hit October, but I, I'm not sure about that.
I think September is when she and I, uh, our terms are up.
There could be, you know, Mark will discuss that with the city manager and see if the council wants to fill the spot or-
And she, uh, she wrote a very, uh, submitted a very sweet, uh, letter resignation, thanking everybody and thanking staff and such. And it's in the, uh, it's in the packet from Tuesday's city council meeting. It's worth reading. It's good. So, uh, commission member items and future commission agenda topics, topics. I think you addressed some of that. Anybody else have an item from commission members?
I just wanted quick, uh, words about Sheila Lamb and, uh, really the impact she had on me. Uh, when I was a much younger commissioner on the historic commission, I was a part of a subcommittee. And she came in and joined this, it was like a joint subcommittee. And, uh, I was super impressed with her. And, and she really showed me that as, as a commissioner, that, that, uh, our role is important and, uh, that we can effect change, positive change. And, uh, that was many years ago. And, uh, I would like to say in a small part, that's, uh, what had me continue to serve on commissions from that time until now. So thank you, Commissioner Lamb, Chairperson Lamb, Sheila.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Sheila, for sure. Any, any other items from the commission?
I just have a general question. People have been asking me about some, uh, construction project that's going up on Avenue D. It seems to be multifamily. I don't know anything about it other than, uh, some people have asked, uh, why did I approve that? Which I, I said, uh, but it was just, I was drinking at the time.
You know, uh, Commissioner Craig called me about, I think, some multi-unit development on Avenue D and-
You know what?
Uh, we've really, we don't, I'm not aware of one.
Prospect, maybe? Easter Prospect.
Did it prospect?
Off of the, east of Prospect, I think.
Okay. Oh, East of Prospect. Yeah, um, you know, I don't have any details on it. And that, I don't think there's any multifamily on the east side of Prospect either, so.
The concern is, is all of a sudden there's a multi-unit, uh, uh, structure going up in a single-family-
Yeah.
Presidential area and people are saying, how could this even happen? Well, we know.
Yeah, it, it, it could be an accessory dwelling unit and a junior accessory dwelling unit and a single-family residence. That's the most they could get, so.
So it's probably, uh-
Could be that.
A single-family unit that's, that's taking advantage of ADU-ish. My impression, it was a four-unit apartment building.
Four unit would, it looks like-
It's still a little bit of that, right?
That would be the four units.
You got it by half and then by half again.
Yeah, but they would have, we would, we didn't do an SP nine, that would be an SP nine lot. We haven't done that on Avenue D. So the most it could be is potentially three units there.
Might wanna check on that before they have to have them tear it down. What's, so, uh, I was surprised to hear you say South Bay Social District because, uh, it seems to me that that might not be the name anymore. What's going on with the, uh, the changes in relation to-
I'm not, I'm not aware of a change to their name.
Well, I don't, I, I don't know that there is a change to the name, but I was kind of assuming when I heard that, uh, Kennedy Wilson was now the owner.